Meeting the order, so we'll go ahead and get started. It's so good to see everybody here tonight. Mr. Flumer is traveling and with the beautiful weather that we've had today, he has gotten trapped. So he's gonna try to get in, but I'm not sure that he's even gonna be able to do that based on flight times. He was worried about missing his connector, so we'll just pray him safe travels as he goes and go ahead and move forward. If he gets in there, you let us know and we'll get him in, okay? All right, so the meeting is called to order. Item number one is a review and discussion of the revised Property Maintenance and Nuisance Code. So Mr. Schacher, we'll let you kick us off.
Yes, sir. Well, I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman, members of council. In your packet and then also in front of your place under the agenda is a paper copy of the nuisance codes. And I know some of y'all may have brought a copy with you that you had marked up. But Katie and I kinda took an approach similar to the one that we used last time, where we just tried to identify for you the changes made. And the changes were made in reaction to feedback from y'all. And I think maybe there are some general comments too, some general feedback y'all provided that may not be specifically, you know, addressed with those changes, but you know, definitely could be something we could discuss. And if there are additional changes that we need to make, we could make those based on the input. I don't know if y'all mind me just kinda skipping to the places where we had changes, 'cause I know we've reviewed it a few times now. But you'll see that in subsection two, which is the definitions, that, you know, we struck abandoned junk vehicle. Because, you know, we were really trying to pare the ordinance down to, you know, focusing on structures that are occupied, not unoccupied structures, structures that are unoccupied but unfit for occupation. So that, you know, so vehicles were not within that initial scope. So you'll notice that, you know, the vehicles were struck in two places in the definition section. And actually, there's an underscore, but it's really a struck through with outdoor storage, on disassembled, inoperable, or unlicensed vehicles or vegetable matter. Because council made it clear that at this point in time, you were not wanting to focus on overgrowth. And so we wanted to be very intentional with the language in the ordinance to make sure that it was not construed as an ordinance that would address overgrowth. And then going on down to the last two definitions in the definition section, section two, we struck vegetation and vehicle.
On the previous page, I've got junk vehicle is being slashed as well. Was that a previous change or is that a now change?
I actually think it was a previous change we made. So this is what you saw at the last meeting.
I got you.
With that particular one, so.
So what I underlined in the copy that I printed out and was reviewing, in outdoor storage, we took vegetation out in so many places, but we add vegetable matter there. I don't understand.
Yeah, that was the one I mentioned. I think that was supposed to be a strike through. It's in red, like it was struck, but it got underscored instead of struck.
Sorry, I wasn't with you. My apologies. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's something I kinda used the wrong key on.
Gotcha. Good deal.
And when we're talking vegetation, what does that mean when you say natural growth?
Well, really, it's a pretty inclusive term. I mean, it would be brush, grass, weeds, any kind of vegetative matter.
Katsu.
Yeah.
If you can control it.
It was pretty sweeping. And I guess the reason for that was just trying to be responsive to y'all's interest in initially focusing on where we've got dilapidated structures that are unsafe for occupation. And rubbish too. You know, y'all identified rubbish as a top priority. But that's definitely something, I mean, it's something we can address now or it's something that y'all could look at potentially adding at a future date if that's something the council wants to do.
I'd love to be able to address junk vehicles and vegetation, but that's a little bit more we can bite off at this time.
And let me, if I could, real quick. Boy, I'll keep going unless y'all had some more questions about definitions or feedback. Okay, so in subsection three, where we, and this is the section where we, okay, we've done definitions. Now we're moving into where we're identifying conditions or items that constitute a nuisance. You can see that we struck through the first section, subsection A in section three, that addresses junk vehicles. So that kinda corresponds to the strike through on the definitions. And then, and so that was A. And then on the next page, subsection F, we addressed the vegetable matter so that we're making it decaying animals, not decaying animals or vegetables. And we also struck through the reference to farm implements. Because, you know, y'all made it clear that you didn't want this ordinance to affect agricultural operations or even, you know, like family farms, hobby farms. So, you know, we addressed that by striking through farm implements. We also struck through subsection G, which is the next one, dealing with odor, you know, the accumulation of materials that cause an odor. And struck through the next subsection, which deals with diseased trees or trees that are damaged or dead or limbs. You know, and it really, initially, the focus was on private property and then we cut it back to just public rights away. And then I know that, you know, we got some feedback from the public with some concerns about that. So this would eliminate the, you know, the whole dead tree provisions in the ordinance. But again, that's something y'all could always, you could add it now, you could add it to a later date. It's just, you know, however you wanna handle that. The next subsection I deals with weeds and vegetation, and again, it's struck through as well. And then we wanted to, we knew, we know we got some feedback from the public with some concerns about building materials and lumber. And in some cases, not necessarily used for typical construction. I think an example that was used is, well, you know, what if I'm making deer stands? Or, you know, something like that. And so by striking through building materials in K and then striking through the entire subsection of L, we felt like we addressed that for y'all on the lumber and building materials. And then did the same thing with M, which is just rusted. And then did the same thing with M, which is just rusted or, you know, junked or dismantled agricultural implements or anything used for agricultural purposes. Just to make sure we're consistent there when it comes to ag uses. We did make some changes. I know the entire thing's underlined and it's in green. But that was really just to make it more illegible, instead of having strike throughs and additions and wanting it being a little confusing for you. But subsection N, I know there was a concern about stagnant water. And so what we wanted here was just to make sure that, you know, we're not impacting agricultural activities. So if it's a pool of water related to an agricultural activity, it would be exempt. If it's a required retention pond or a detention pond, you know, something for stormwater, it would be exempt as well. And what we're looking at here would be standing water not related to stormwater, some form of stormwater detention, not related to agricultural activities and harboring insects that are impacting adjoining properties. So it was to try to narrowly focus it on that, where it's a nuisance to an adjoining property, you know, in terms of like insect activity.
I got a question on that, Jeff, 'cause I've had a couple calls of an issue in my district where the ditches haven't been cleaned out and where it goes under the road was clogged up and it was causing water to back up on people's property and it was kinda like stagnant and stuff like that. And finally, we went out there and cleaned out at least the culvert under the road, but still the ditches are like almost, I don't think they've been done in like fifteen, twenty years. It's like they're almost like clogged up and overgrowth and stuff in there. So I don't know what the county's responsibility is, you know, to keep those clean or what the frequency is. But, you know, if, who was liable at that point? The landowner or the county?
Well, and I tell you, the way, so from a code enforcement standpoint, the way we'd look at it is that's in the public right of way. So it wouldn't be subject to the provisions of this ordinance. If it's a county road, we'd get out there and resolve the issue. If it's a state road, we'd work with the state to try to get it resolved for the property owner. It really would be a state issue, but I know Mike and I know Josh will be the same. He's got all the connections at DOT too with his past life. But I mean, we try to help get that resolved.
But it wouldn't be the homeowner's responsibility.
And it wouldn't be an issue under this ordinance. That would be in the public right of way. Okay, subsection O is the one devoted to swimming pools. And this I believe was reflected on the last version of the ordinance y'all had, but we struck through swimming pools, so we eliminated O. Now, an addition that we've got, 'cause you see it in green here, is subsection P, which makes it clear that if you're gonna live in a structure, it's got to have, you know, utilities. But it's got to have basic sanitary services in order for you to live in it. If it's an unoccupied structure, it's not an issue. But it's just if a person is living in it, you're gonna need, you know, electricity and you're gonna need sanitary sewer and running water.
The sewer is where we're getting the calls that people are using their restroom in their yards and not in very nice fashion.
I'm not sure you don't have houses that don't have separate tanks in places.
Yeah.
Not saying, but they should.
Yeah, and it certainly wouldn't, obviously wouldn't have to be, a lot of areas in the county wouldn't be publicly provided, you know. Be a well, except it. And again, you know, we will work with people. We've got the provisions in there for correction agreements and the whole idea is to get you to the table so that we can talk and try to come up with a solution.
I like it.
Try to work with people, not against people. Is there anything else in three that is a concern or anything y'all would like us to address? Okay. Section four, this is where we have some general requirements. And you can see in subsection A, you know, the first subsection there, that we deleted the grass weeds and undergrowth, you know, again, you know, based on the feedback that we got from y'all. And then, you know, we changed the water to, you know, stagnant water where we've got an insect issue. You know, and again, that's impacting adjacent property. And we can even work on that language if you think the language needs to be reworked. We can do that. But we were trying again to kinda narrowly, more narrowly define, well, what is, when is that a problem? And then scrolling through, that was the last modification that we made. And I know there was a concern, in fact, Katie and I were talking about this with historic properties. And, you know, really with like an older structure, whether it's historically, you know, architecturally significant or not, if it's unoccupied, you know, really this ordinance wouldn't apply. If it is occupied, then it would just sort of be those basic, you know, sanitary requirements that would have to meet in order for it to not be a violation of the ordinance. So that we try to set the bar, you know, I hate to say low, but you know what I mean, where it's not aggressive enforcement. Is there anything that y'all think we need to? I know I didn't give you the full review, 'cause I figured, you know, we've done it a couple times. I didn't wanna go over something y'all were, you know, already felt like you're really familiar with. Is there anything you think we need to go over in more detail or anything y'all need us to change or?
Anybody have anything they wanna ask?
I think it's a good starting point. And we, you know, we need to start low and then we can build up instead of just hammering people. I mean, just overbear it and, you know, see how it works out and ease into it. I think it's good.
I'm the same way. It's a starting point. I'm a bit worried about how we're gonna enforce it, but we'll see.
I agree with Carl and Nick on this. This is kinda like trying to do surgery with a rubber scalpel. Amputate a leg or something. 'Cause, but we said we were looking for a starting place, so I can go along with it as a starting place. But clearly, we struck some things in here that eventually will need to be addressed. Because, you know, we're gonna end up with an ordinance that does nothing.
That's right.
And I'm not sure.
And I'm not sure it's got enough teeth to it.
So it, I can go along with it as a.
It's a good starting.
Starting point.
That will need to be addressed at a later time, in my opinion.
I couldn't agree. I think it's bare bones at best. Yeah, but I think that's where we need to start, being as we've never had anything like this in the county before. We don't, if we overdo this, then we could end up having to repeal the whole thing and this is desperately needed in our county. And I talked to two constituents this weekend alone on that place on 121 that I believe is the poster child for why we need this ordinance. And so I would agree with it. Could I ask, and as long as it's okay with the rest of council, between now and the time we get this on the agenda, could we post the ordinance on our website? And then have a place for feedback from citizens if they wanna say, hey, I think it should or that. That way they get some input into it on the front end. Does that sound reasonable to everybody to do it that way? And just let them have a look at it ahead of time rather than... 'Cause sometimes when it's not out there early, they start guessing at what it says instead of seeing what it says. So not saying that that's what we'll approve, but at least that's what the consideration might be.
I'd rather hear it on the front end and the back.
No question. No question.
That's not a bad idea. We certainly have to have a date that comments are due by.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Prior to when we take it to first reading or are we gonna open ourselves up to?
No question.
Something we'll not be able to.
And some discernment on which comments we actually see. Some of them we may not like. I don't mind the mad comments, but if it's personal.
You're gonna get that type.
To go fly a kite. No, I don't mind. I wanna see everything good and bad about it. I'm being tongue in cheek there.
You don't mind, you don't wanna see it.
Right. I do.
Let's see a look at it.
It's so much, as it said, doing it on the front end is so much better than trying to fix it as we roll. And so I think the more we allow citizens to see what we're doing.
Their county too.
What we're considering, I think that matters.
Totally agree.
We can definitely do that and, you know, we'll be clear, we'll be very conscious of the fact it's a draft document. We'll make sure it's watermarked as such.
And make sure that it's an ending date on there.
Yes.
What, from a timeline standpoint, when do you think you'd like to see this in a council meeting for first reading? Taking into account the comment period and...
I think it needs to be on there and be implemented during the summertime, 'cause that's when you have most of your.
Would it be unreasonable to have it on the first meeting in April? That would give the rest of the month to have people comment on it and review on it and all.
Put it on the website for about a month of comments and... April, first of April sounds great.
Yep, so the first meeting in April?
Okay, or, you know, and that'd be great, or if you did the second meeting.
Or we compile the comments at our work session in the first meeting of April and take it to first reading in the middle of the second meeting in April.
Possibly the second.
We compile the comments and make any adjustments.
Yeah, have it for our work session the first of April.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that.
If y'all take that approach and you have it adopted, assuming it went smoothly and according to that schedule, you'd have it adopted for June.
Okay.
You have money in the mail.
I think that's, I think that's a good thing.
Yes.
Slow and steady on this one will be what guides us to success.
We can push it on through or we can pump the brakes.
That's right. That's right. Anybody else got anything on this? Alright, item number two is a discussion of a request from residents to close and remove the bridge on Rawls Road in the Palmieri area to construct a turnaround at the bridge for the section of Rawls Road running from New Hope Road to the bridge and close the section of Rawls Road from Subaru Road to the public bridge, to the bridge as a public road in Newberry County.
Yes, sir. Well, I appreciate us having the opportunity to talk about it here today. I'm just gonna kinda use this as a visual aid. We've got a couple strings around. So we had a executive committee meeting a week's run together.
Last week?
Last week.
Last week.
First part of last week.
Last week. And, you know, at one point, we had a roads and planning committee. And so the executive, no longer having that, the executive committee seemed like the committee that quite regularly was about the only one it could go to. And so we had a meeting scheduled and this issue was brought before the committee and so Travis and Dick are on it. Leon is people's, Leon's traveling. And so we have the flight delays and all, that's why he's not with us today. So Nick and Travis can kinda chime in on this. But we had a couple of residents on Rawls Road that requested that we consider a couple of things. First is, and Eric, if you can kinda scroll at the end if we move to the left, maybe we can pick up New Hope Road? Might not be possible if that's scaled off this stuff. Now you have to zoom out a little bit. But Rawls Road is a gravel road that is in the county maintenance system and it connects New Hope Road with Subaru. And if you kinda take this down, this Palmieri area, if you take Subaru Road down, it comes into New Hope. So New Hope's really more of the artery and Subaru is a road off of New Hope. Well, our gravel road connects the two. And at about the center point, which is here, you can see the little hatch area for the Par reservoir project area, is a creek and we've got a bridge over it. And that bridge is kinda notorious for having issues related to floodwaters. In fact, it's closed.
It's right up there by the hash markers where the bridge is.
The bridge is closed right now, matter of fact.
It's closed right now, 'cause we got an issue with it and we just didn't feel it was a good idea to have the public go across it. Emergency vehicles currently, I mean, even if the bridge were in good condition, cannot cross it 'cause of the size. They can't go around from New Hope to Subaru, so that's, you know... So what the residents requested is that council consider closing the bridge, which again is around it here. And because there is a single, and I say single property owner, it's actually a man, Mr. Russell Suber and his sister that own all of this property. And they actually own some on this side of the bridge too. They own all this. So they're actually around the bridge.
Family owns every bit of the land around it.
And have been there forever. I mean, for centuries, literally. They've requested that in addition to closing the bridge, that we would consent to the closing of the road on this side, on the Subaru roadside of Rawls Road. So basically, this county road that currently runs through their property would be closed and would become theirs. We would no longer have any maintenance responsibilities. Y'all were to authorize this in a court work and we remove the bridge 'cause of the liability concerns associated with that. And then what he said is that because, and I say he, Mr. Russell Suber, because the Subers own 679-4, well, actually it's the same tax map number, because they own that parcel, that we construct a turnabout, 'cause you'd have to have a turnabout, 'cause you'd have one way in coming off of New Hope Road, one way out, that we do a turnaround there and they would provide the property for that, the additional right of way we would need for it. It's similar to what we did on Old Jolly Street Road.
Right.
That was that's what was closed there with Stanley Shealy. So I know that there is, at this point, Mr. Suber's taught with many of his neighbors, neighboring property owners, on the side of the bridge it would remain open. 'Cause this side could not be closed to the public and would remain in the county system. It would just, instead of being a through road, it would become a road that would have a cul-de-sac at the end and you'd turn around.
Kinda like it is now.
Yeah, like it is now, yeah, like it's been for a while now, except there's no turnaround. There is one resident who has some concerns about the road being removed from the system and being closed and the bridge being closed. Other than that, the individuals, and he actually had them sign a petition, had no objection. In fact, some of them who were on this end were very supportive of it because they could see some benefits from that happening. So in terms of the process, only a court can close a road. And so how that would work, if it was something y'all wanted to do, is that the property owners will need to petition the court to close the road. And Joni can kinda clarify some things or even correct me if anything has been stated by me. But only the court could, so they would have to petition the court, the property owners. There would be an ad that would run in the newspaper three times.
Prior to the petition.
'Cause the intent to petition the court would be advertised. Certified mail notice would be provided to the affected property owners on the road. And then there would be a filing to actually petition the court to close, right?
Would the landowner responsible for doing all that or does the county?
Yeah, there's a good bit of responsibility on the landowner.
The county's not responsible for any of that, right?
No, the only thing we would recommend, and this is something Joni and I had talked about, is that we would, it would be an amicus, that we would file in response to the petition that would indicate we are not opposed to the petition. I think though, kinda to your point about the responsibility on the landowner and the cost of doing that, they'd probably like an indication from the county that we're not opposed to it as opposed to incurring that expense, going through that process and then the county says, no, we don't want the county road closed. That's where the, you know, some form of action from council on the front end, I think just a motion and vote, saying that, hey, we're not opposed to it. We understand that the residents made petition to close the road and we're also authorizing staff to prepare the amicus brief when we get to that point. And you're gonna have to have a petition first to the court before you can file a brief. The way that would work, if, you know, it would be, of course, a lot of advertising requirements here in terms of public notice. There would be direct public notice. There would be a proceeding that, you know, in court. The judge would make a ruling. If the judge ordered or granted the request for the road to be closed, then what we would recommend is council then act by ordinance to actually remove just this section from the bridge back to Subaru, not the New Hope section, that y'all would use an ordinance to remove. from the bridge back to Suber, not the New Hope section, that y'all would use an ordinance to remove it from the county system. Cause, you know, we use an ordinance to add a road. Now, this road may predate the use of an ordinance to do that, but, but still, I think the action would be, and there'd be a, a public hearing associated with that ordinance and, you know, we do that with all our ordinances, but, um, but there'd be a great deal of, of public notes provided, so there shouldn't be any surprises in terms of what's being requested by the landowners.
That's a safe, a lot of it's a safety issue for the private landowner. I mean, he's ran up on people with guns and hunting on his property and everything else, so.
And they mentioned, you know, the road being blocked by people, um.
Tearing up his fields?
Who owns, uh, property six seventy-seven dash three?
Oh, at the corner? I'm not sure. It's at the, uh, corner of Suber and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the Subers also.
Uh, to the left, kinda where the road intersects Suber.
Three.
Uh, dash three is the smaller property.
Six seventy-seven dash three?
Yep.
I mean, I can look it up real quick for you. Should be able to click on it.
Oh, that's his sister.
And, and on the, uh, the lower sides, what's that, six twenty dash two, that's also Suber?
I believe that's.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I believe the son lives here now.
Okay.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Cause I went up there to.
Uh, George?
Address the issue, so. Took pictures of the bridge and.
And the whole family came to the committee meeting. Of course, they're very appreciative of y'all just considering this. In fact, Russell and I spoke today on the phone about it. He asked if he needed to be here and I said, I really didn't think so. The main purpose today was just to make the whole council aware of this, so, you know, you had an opportunity to kinda think about it and not be surprised by anything.
So we will have this as an agenda item in the near future, is that?
I, I think so. We, we wanted to get a feel from y'all how you felt about it and if you'd like that on the, I mean, it could, it could be on next meeting's agenda, uh, if you feel like.
So we need to put it on our agenda before he petitions the court?
I, I think it would be good to indicate that at that point, y'all don't have opposition to it, provided that the court.
Well. If we don't have any opposition from any of us at this point and we're in a work session, that we can.
Bring it up.
We can come out.
This evening, we can come out of this work.
Under item five.
Free them up to go ahead and start the process instead of holding it up for another.
Two weeks.
Couple of weeks.
Cause since everybody signed a petition except for one person and that person didn't show up.
The ones that I was most concerned about were the entrance to, on the road that's gonna be closed. But if those are the ones that are petitioning to, to close it, then.
Yeah, they own all the land.
And, and of course, the other people on the other end do have a, you know, a right for consideration, of course, since they may have used that road.
Right.
Uh, in the past and through it, but right now, like you said, they can anyway, so.
I don't have a problem with coming out and doing it. My only concern would be if somebody heard it tonight and we'd already voted on it, they wouldn't really have a chance to talk to us. And so that would give two weeks for them to come in and.
But we got so much legal stuff and eventually we gotta have three readings and an ordinance to do it.
But that's on the backside after the judge has already turned it over. It's too late, I mean, we couldn't stop it at that point.
Well, then why are we having an ordinance with three readings if we couldn't stop it?
Just an official act to remove the road system.
The judge would have ruled it closed, it's just an act to take it out, but it would be.
Removing it from the system.
If a circuit court judge is taking it out of our road system, we couldn't go, no, it's too late. Yeah, so that, that's my only, that's my only thought in the delay is to give anybody from the public a chance to talk. Sounds like they've contacted them. I'd be willing to vote for it tonight. I'm just saying, if we, if we do that and it's the first time we heard anything about it, we just are robbing people of a chance to come in and speak to us about it if they'd like to. But I don't, I don't, it sounds like they've already contacted everybody and so I don't have a problem either way. Somebody makes the motion, I will support it.
And just to kinda clarify, uh, I know I'm kinda putting maybe a little bit of words into Russell's mouth. He has spoken with all the folks that live on the road. We've got some absentee property owners that own some smaller tracks on the New Hope side that he is not, he doesn't know them personally, uh, cause there's been some properties that have changed hands, you know, probably in recent years. Uh, and they live wherever they live and he hasn't spoken to them. I guess one way of looking at this is that really the court will decide and there'll be direct mail and there'll be, uh, notice in the newspaper and an opportunity to be heard and if there are, uh,
Objection.
Valid objections, then, you know, a judge ain't gonna order the closure.
I got you.
Yeah.
Cause they could, they could really do it without council, council's approval or.
Yeah.
But, but I could, I could.
At the court.
Yeah.
If they took it to court.
Okay, I don't, again, I don't have a problem with it. That was my only thought is just leaving a little room for somebody that might wanna address us about it.
Well, I tell you where I was going with that is, I mean, I, I kinda see, and y'all need to decide this, I, I could see some value in delaying it, you know, uh, maybe till at least the next meeting, just to, so that you are giving somebody an opportunity. But I guess the thing I wondered is, would, would y'all, if we did that, would you want us to do any kinda outreach? Or do you think just that being listed on an agenda is enough? I mean, you wouldn't be closing it, you'd just simply be saying, hey, we're comfortable with staff preparing an amicus brief at the right time, saying we don't oppose it. That would really be what you'd be doing.
I, I'm not passionate one way or the other about it. Again, I'm willing to support it tonight or at the next meeting. I just was trying to err on the side of comments.
It's a little different on Jolly Street, cause we didn't close the road, we just took the bridge out, right? It's open on both sides. The county still owns the road.
Well, uh, Mr. Stanley, uh, the, the section of the road that runs through his property is closed. He's got a, well, he didn't have an actual.
Just one little small section, but.
Yeah, just down the hill to.
Both sides are still county owned, except for one part, the last part to him.
His section at the end, yeah.
I'm happy with it either way too.
Yeah. Man, I don't know, I, I don't wanna hold anybody up if they're had some burning desire to make it happen.
They could do that without us doing anything.
That's right.
They could petition the court without coming to us.
That's right.
So as far as.
Slow as it's.
Us being happy to let it happen, if it happens that way, I'm happy to let it happen.
I'm happy with it either way.
Me too.
Let's roll.
Me too.
Let's roll.
If somebody makes the motion, I will support it. I'll do that. How about that? That's as honest as I can be about it.
Easy, specific, I just wanted you to know.
No, no, I'm fine, I'm fine with it. I, I don't see anything but good come out of it myself. And so I think it makes sense, we're not landlocking anybody, we're not robbing anybody of access to land. Um, and it's taken, it, it saved the taxpayers money, um, from the maintenance and stuff. So I just don't see anything negative about it from a county perspective. So as a friend of the court, I'm fine with it.
And we've got a problem about a bridge that we're, you know.
That's right.
The county keeps spending money to repair it, still, our emergency vehicles and motor grader cannot cross that.
Can't get over it, that's right.
To me, it just saves the county money not having to deal with the bridge.
Yep.
And what's the name of that road again?
Rawls.
Rawls Road. Rawls, R-A-W-L-S.
Okay, anything else on that item?
Uh, no, sir.
Hearing none, that concludes the agenda for the five o'clock meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by, uh, Mr. Reader, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, let the record show, it was unanimous vote to adjourn.
It is six o'clock. It's time for our regularly scheduled meeting to start. We'd like to thank you all for being here. We'd ask the Honorable Les Hip to do our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let's bow our heads first of all. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for being here overlooking and giving direction to these folks on county council that make decisions impacting all of our citizens. And we ask that you please give us knowledge and the will to serve our constituents to the best possible way we can. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right again, we welcome you here. It's so good to see you out on such a rainy day. Item number one on our agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda, which consists of the county council work session of February 21, the county council meeting of February 21, and the executive committee meeting of February 26. Unless there is objection, we'll handle these as one item. Hearing none, is there a motion that we accept the minutes on the consent agenda as published? Motion by Mr. Shee- I'm sorry, motion by Mr. Sees, second by Mr. Shealy. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands and opposed likewise. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion that we adopt the agenda as published? Motion by Reverend Curry, second by Mr. Reader, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Item number three on our agenda is ordinance number 02012024, which is an ordinance to adopt the Newberry County 2023-2033 Comprehensive Plan as mandated by the Sacramento Local Government Comprehensive Planning Enabling Act of 1984, '94, I'm sorry, as amended, and to provide for the repeal of all prior comprehensive plans and ordinances. This is third reading. Is there a motion? This be third reading. Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Reverend Curry. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Item number four on our agenda is ordinance number 02022024, which is an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of North Shore Road located within the Edgewater Shore subdivision into the Newberry County Public Road System. This is the public hearing. I hereby declare the public hearing open. Anyone that would like to speak on this agenda item is welcome to come forward to the podium at this time. Seeing no one move unless there's objection from council, we declare the public hearing closed. Without objection, public hearing is closed. Item subsection B is the second reading. Is there a motion that this be second reading? By Mr. Sees makes the motion that this be second reading. Mr. Shealy seconds that motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise. Item number five on our agenda is county council to make any- take any actions necessary following the executive session on matters discussed during the executive session. That was just a work session, not executive session, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that is just a verification that council has no objection to closure and removal of Rawls Road from the county road system.
A portion of.
A portion of.
A portion, pardon me, yeah, a portion of that.
Should we designate that as from Suba Road to the county bridge? Okay. Do you mind putting that? Is that okay to have that part of your motion?
Absolutely, yeah.
Mr. Hip, all right? As a motion that we have no objection and file as a friend of the court, I always get tongue up on that word, hung up on the word, so we'll just call it friend of the court because that's all it means anyway, is that we are not opposed to removing the section of Rawl Road between Suba Road and the county bridge from the county road system. Is there a second related to that? And second by Mr. Shealy. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise. Any appointments from any council member? Hearing none, any public comments? No one signed up for public comments. Comments and requests from the county administrator?
No, sir, I really don't have anything specific. One, I guess a couple items I could make you aware of, though. We did receive notification. It's not final because it has to be approved by the Federal Energy Agency, but the State Energy Office let us know that our grant application for $75,000 to replace heating and air units, you know, we're trying to target units with the old R22 refrigerant and also those that are in qualifying census tracts, because that was one of the criteria, evaluation criteria, was approved. And so this grant would enable us to replace heating and air units, and it's in the draft budget we're preparing for y'all now for '24-'25, so you'll see that. And that leads me to the second item I was going to mention to you is just we just continue to work on the budget, and we're hopeful that we'll begin having department head meetings next week to review their requests, and then we'll try to get you a draft copy as far in advance as we can before the March 26th and 27th budget work sessions.
Okay.
So you've got time to review it.
Awesome. Thank you so much and great work on the grant. That's incredible. Comments from county council? Mr. Hip?
The last meeting, you had given us, I think, an update, not specifics, about the re-estimating the cost of the SP- CSP capital proj- CPST projects. We were going to get an email comparing the original cost with the new predicted cost, and we haven't gotten that yet.
The revised estimates, yeah. We were trying to get the detention center perfected, polished up a little bit. There wasn't a breakdown on the different expenditures, you know, associated with construction management, construction, some of the, you know, other components of the project. We need to make sure that the construction management cost to with the company Clayton Construction that we're using for project management is in that number, and it's not, and so we should have that pretty soon, and I'll get you that comparison. Kind of a two-column approach, the original estimate, well, the valided amount, the original estimate, which are one and the same.
Yeah, should be the same, and then the bad news.
And the bad news.
That's right. Anything else, sir? All right, Mr. Sees?
Just like to thank staff for helping us work through the budget. I know we'll be seeing that soon, but I know you guys have been working hard on that, and also I'd like to thank Jeff for helping with some of my constituents' issues that I wasn't sure exactly how to go about doing it, but Jeff took care of it and got things rolling. Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Reader?
I have nothing.
Reverend Curry?
Let me, uh, tell me, introduce a new minister our area. Minister, if you please stand and give your name.
I'm a keeper county chef. How y'all doing?
All right.
I work for the sheriff's office.
All right.
Thank you so much.
You retired, Jeff?
Thank you.
Your retirement?
That's just it.
Okay. Last chair, Shealy.
Glad to have everybody here this evening. Congratulations, and we're still looking for sheriff's deputies, and if you still have work on top, so you're more than welcome to go back there, too. But thank you for being here. Thank y'all staff for working on the budget and everything you do.
I would just like to warn you not to get used to this. This is an anomaly because budget season is coming, and so we will pay our dues and then some, so. Future meetings, the finance committee meeting for March 11th has been canceled, so there will not be a finance committee meeting on March 11th. Newberry County Work Session, March 20 at 5:00. Newberry County Council Meeting, March 20 at 6:00. Budget Work Session Meeting, March 26th at 5:00 and March 27 at 5:00, and then, of course, Good Friday coming with Easter coming. The offices will be closed on March 29th. Is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Shealy makes the motion to adjourn. Mr. Reader makes the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, we stand adjourned. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you so much, Jeff.